Called the Metropolis City Council Order Monday, November the tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Presine.
Here.
Daughtry.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand please for the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you have given each and every one. Be with our community, dear heavenly Father, for the ones that have lost loved ones. Be with the sick. Not only be with the sick, but be with the caregivers. Be with this meeting that each and every decision that is made here tonight will be for the betterment of the community. Be with our nation, dear heavenly Father, be with our service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States. Guide and direct their families and bring them safely home too. As my precious name. Amen. The motion to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting, which was ten forty-seven fourteen. Called a roll. Moved by Ms. Brown. Will outweigh. Ten second by Mr. Presine. Call roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Citizens request. Thankful his family back there, so. First item, mayor's report. Motion to accept application for payment number one for the Franklin Park Pool improvements in the amount of sixty-six thousand nine sixty-four oh two. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item. Motion to adopt resolution for road closure for the annual Christmas parade sponsored by the Metropolis Chamber of Commerce on Saturday, December the sixth.
I'll make that motion.
My second, Mr. Barfield motion.
Motion made in second, call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Call your attention on the reminders, I'm sure, of stalling on, City Hall will be closed tomorrow. Veterans Appreciation and Fall Festival, Frank Barber Chevrolet, tomorrow, eleven to three. And mastectomy, walk, whatever what that is. Masse-emia. Masse-emia, walk. And that actually is sponsored, but I, I think by Ms. Connie McGinnis, I think. David's wife. Yeah. And that is a first time event also.
What does any include?
They're going to walk from the Superman statue, they're actually going to start on Ninth Street. And walk to the statue, and that's going to be on November the fifteenth. It's on a Saturday, but it's at noon, twelve o'clock.
At noon, alright, very good, thank you.
And that's been planned and advertised for some time.
I've never read it.
They advertise a lot on it, because it is a first time event. Next item, corporate council report, Ms. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. The item I thought we were going to take up were the bids for the demolition of FEMA properties. However, we only received one bid, and FEMA says we have to have more than one bid, so we're going to have to rebid it. We think maybe the reason for only getting one bid was we had allowed a relatively short period of time, I think forty-five days, for completion of the work. And that may have scared some of them off, but that's also why we broke it into groups of four. Because of these little properties, you, anybody ought to be able to take down four of them in about forty-five days. But we only had one bidder. So, we've asked FEMA, can we go back, if we go back out, because they just basically got to rebid it. Can we extend that, say, give them ninety days or a hundred and twenty days, what we allow us to go out? And then we'll have to re-advertise. HMG was kind enough, they put our advertisement and our invitation to bid on two websites that contractors typically look at. And the only bid we got, as you can see, came from Drew Quinn, I mean, he's local, which was nice, we hoped that he, he put everything in there, but can't take it, so.
Did he, uh?
We're not going to reveal who bid, because he may want to, again, that's all I'm just going to.
Did he get all?
He bid all, he bid all the proper shares.
So FEMA says you've got to have more than one bidder.
Yes.
So what happens if we miss to go around, we just get one bid?
I don't know, we've asked that question, they didn't.
I think we'll add more than one.
We asked and they didn't answer, so I don't know. I mean, I'm just, the only, I don't want to call it solution.
Well, he, he, he didn't have all his stuff ready for one thing, and he didn't bid all of it. So, and I, the reason he didn't was because of the timetable, he just didn't feel like he could get the project completed in the time allotted, he didn't want to bid it and then be penalized.
We know of four contractors that inquired about it, including the one that did the demolition down at the pool, okay? Because he, right after he got that done, he saw we were bidding, and he, in fact, he emailed me and said, how do I go about doing this? I said, go to City Hall, pick up a packet, and just, you know, bid it. And he didn't bid it. And as far as I know, we never got a packet, but we had three of them pick up packets, and like I say, only one turned one in with everything that's required, okay?
I do believe we'll get more, get more time.
Well, do we look at?
Well, like, instead of forty-five days, I've asked, could we go, Trish Patterson emailed to Ron Davis and asked if we could go ninety days or a hundred and twenty days on the thing? Give them some time, and see if they bid it.
This time of year, I mean, if you caught, a couple of weeks of inclement weather and stuff like that, you'd be, you'd be behind.
I think part of the problem is, some of the small ones we've used in the past, well, my, they don't want to get demolition insurance, well, that's required, okay? Some of them don't want to have to deal with the prevailing wage element, that's required. Some of them may not be able to bond a job, that's required. We don't have any choice in that matter, those are FEMA guidelines, okay, so. But we certainly thought we would get a response from some of those that are maybe a little bit bigger, that we've seen in the past, whether it be the one that did the pool, because they had to do all this. Or whether it be like Mott up at Vianna, because he's had to do that kind of bonding and that kind of work before. But, I don't know, but nobody picked it up.
Well, basically, our hands are tied until we hear from them, or we rebid them.
Yep.
We won't even go out to rebid until we hear from them about what kind of changes we can make.
They're entitled to time.
And once we do that, if they say yes, you can go ninety or a hundred and twenty, then we'll start the advertising again, we'll change it to whatever they let us change it to.
That is my next question, when can we do that?
Just the minute they give us an answer, we'll turn around, we'll start again. And we'll ask HMG to put it back out on the websites and make note that we've extended the time.
And that's the only change we'll have to make, is just the time.
Yeah, that'll be the only change we really have to make. Beyond that, you know, I don't know what it's going to take to get some more bids now. If you bid it a second time and we don't get any more, I'm, I'm at a loss. That's probably a question I posed to Ron Davis this week, by email, and say, okay, so we do it again. If that's all we get, what happens?
If we, if we, in other words, when we set it out this time, and say, we give them ninety or a hundred and twenty days, can, one or FEMA will let them if they run into bad weather?
We wrote that in the contract.
It's in there.
There's a, that's called a force majeure clause, but it basically says if you're prevented from doing it due to bad weather, strikes, acts of God, a whole bunch of things, then we can extend the contract time. So you always allow them that.
And there's enough money allotted that, that shouldn't be an issue. I mean, they should be able to tear anything down.
But just, got to have more than one bidder, you know?
I don't either, I don't.
I do think the time thing was the killer.
Yeah, but I mean, them requiring more than one bid, you know, we did the procedure, and then they.
I understand. I, I'm assuming if we try a second time and don't get more than that, they'll probably let us do it then, but, because we at least made every effort to get more than one bidder, but.
If we don't, you might have to apply for a fire training or a fire department.
Well, they actually, they actually asked if they could do, they can't do a burn, but they asked if they could do some training and something, we said, sure, you're not going to, won't matter what, whatever you want to do to them.
Jason smiled when he said burn.
Yeah.
Well, that's good.
We've done the best we can do until we find out, Ron, and then we, if it, if it come in tomorrow, well, it won't come in tomorrow, but if it come in Thursday or Friday, we'll, we'll immediately change the timeframe on it, send it right back down. I do think we'll get, I think we'll get at least two. And if not, maybe, you know, let them guys, a couple of them can go get it or something like that, and split it up, so. Anyway.
We're there, somebody throw a bid against them and get a bid.
Yeah. Ray, we want anything else for the good and cause?
No, sir.
Next item. Water Light and Street Committee meeting.
Yes, Mayor, we have two items ready for the council. Our meeting was held on November the fourth, and here are the two, and I will make a motion on both. I will make the motion to accept the final pay request for the Carter-Crefu service replacements in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and ten cents to Airman Contract Incorporated.
Second.
I've got questions.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second, or Mr. Mizell.
Yeah, a question.
Are we, as far as repair of the grounds out there, what do we, what do we have on that?
It's been complete, the, it's been seeded, I do know they're monitoring, of course, there's like sinkholes and whatnot.
Okay, so our thing has been taken care of. Of course, I know.
Yes, sir.
Where they drove that through there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good.
Of course, I know everything is completed.
Good.
I, I did get a complaint from one of the neighbors, and I'm going to have Chad or Chad or both Chads check. Apparently, right after we did this, one, there's a new party out in that neighborhood on Crefu, they put a fence right back over the top of where we had.
Where they put the pool?
I don't know, I have no idea, I just, one of the neighbors told me, I don't know who it is, but they put a fence right over the top.
It's not where the pool is at, was it? No.
I think I know the address, but I, I don't know who it is, I think it's somebody that just bought a house, but.
That's the one you're talking about. I think that's the one, different man.
Oh, right. So, you know, I, I don't know. I guess we'll leave it, but I, I, if it's up, like, maybe already completely up, but they said they were in process of putting a fence, and neighbor said, we ate these easements, I ever said, so you get back there, and now somebody's building fence right on top of it, so.
Easement's there, we moving fence?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. I mean, we may need to let them know that their fence is subject to being moved.
I think twice.
They, they were complaining, of course, we's moving dirt too.
Oh, really?
Moving dirt. Maybe they don't understand easement.
Okay, alright.
Alright, we do have a motion, we have had discussion, we have a second. Now we're going to.
Alright, we're ready.
Alright, call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes. I will make the motion to accept a three-year, a three-year Magnus agreement with Cross Point for emergency power generation equipment in the amount of eight thousand five hundred fifteen dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
In three years.
Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Mizell, discussion. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
And concludes our report. Thank you, Ms. Barfield, thank you. Next item, industrial committee. Mr. Midnight.
Okay, we have an ordinance approving the hash farm lease for the airport property idea. And at our committee meeting, we did discuss the four bids that we did have, and this is the recommendation that came out of the committee. So I will make a motion that we adopt ordinance twenty fourteen.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, as presented, using the Walquist Farm bid.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Midnight, second by Mr. McManus, discussion. Hearing, now, call roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have another ordinance, also, we've had the first reading on this, this would be twenty fourteen thirty-seven, I assume. And it is for the sale of the property at one thousand nine North Avenue and one thousand fifteen North Avenue. We did have one bidder, Seagreen Properties, and so that is included in the ordinance, and the recommendation from the committee again, is that we adopt this order, so I'll make that as a motion.
Second. Any other discussion? Call roll please.
Barfield.
No.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
Mizell.
Yes.
And the mayor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last item I have, after some discussion, we are going to make a motion to accept the extension of the lease of the old gas company building for six months, at the present rate of five hundred dollars per month. Do we, don't need to put the name of the person, this is just an extension of the existing lease, and I'll make that as a motion.
Second. And in discussion, I did make contact as directed by the committee, to make sure that the individual was.
Understood.
Understood what was happening, how it could happen, and stuff like that, and he certainly understood, and he was all right with that. And said he did want to extend the thank you to the city council and the committee for the opportunity to continue like that, so. We do have a motion, we do have a second, call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And I think, Mayor, that's all that came out of that committee.
Department heads, starting in the four corner, Mr. Massey.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Morris.
Nothing here.
Mr. Barry. Frank.
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Holder, do you have anything for the good of the? Boy, you must be bored tonight.
Quite not.
Chad. Chad.
The intergovernmental agreement, yes. Massey County Enterprise though, their governmental agreements, should be before, yeah, I hope.
Yep.
I've taken it to the county, they signed off on it, Village Japos signed off on it, Brookport meets this Friday at seven, I don't know yet, I don't know if they'll sign off on it. This is the, or the application for the new enterprise zone, as you all may know, ours is expiring in twenty eighteen, and we're wanting to apply to be one of the first zones that they give out in twenty sixteen. We want to compete for one of those, so we forego our two years to get a brand new zone in fifteen years. This is the intergovernmental agreement that pretty much defines the terms and rules of conduct of the, of the enterprise zone, and how parties will interact with one another. So look for a motion and.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Midnight, second by Mr. Holder.
And as soon as I get it next month, I'll have on the agenda the final ordinance, that concludes, so we'll get that with the best of our ability to.
Discussion? Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Presine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Old business. New business.
I have one item, Mayor. The Metropolis City Tourism Commission will meet this Thursday at eleven o'clock in these chambers, this is thirteen.
Thursday at eleven?
Yes, sir. Do you have anything, Mike?
We wanted to make sure that we had the blessing of the city council, because we're getting ready to find out what it takes to get our own visitors bureau. So that we can bypass the Southern Illinois, Southern Most Illinois Tourism Bureau and the Southern Most Illinois Tourism Network, if they still exist. I don't even know if they do or not.
Well, I think in the conversations that I've, I've known about, I think they, I won't speak for everybody, but I think the majority are willing to move forward unless you find out where it's going to go and how it's going to be done.
I have another, Mayor.
Yes.
I got a call today, and this lady said that she had talked to you at one point about this, about the city putting up a Christmas tree by the Superman sign.
Really?
And several of the civic organizations have asked for this, and all I'm just inquiring is to where we, what committee would we send this to?
Public Recreation.
Okay, I don't know.
I think they have to know that.
I'm just talking, but as far as I know, no one's ever talked to me about a Christmas tree.
I haven't had any inquiries.
Well, this person called me.
No, it's not that I'm against it.
Yeah, I mean, no, and they, she indicated she thought if the city had some way to put the tree up, maybe the civic groups would.
Decorate it?
Decorate it. And, I mean, obviously, this is something that's going to have to be discussed in a hurry, if we're going to do it, but, so I thought I would bring it up, and we would find where it belongs and discuss it.
They're repairing the lights now, aren't they?
That's for the, that's for the street.
Yeah, the street lights.
Yeah, they, in fact, does either last night or tonight, at six o'clock, the ladies are going to get together, and Art is going to let them in, they re-bulging the, for the poles, and things like that, and, and I, I hope they're moving forward with it. We actually, I've talked to the chamber, maybe I, maybe not even bring it up, but I'm going to do it anyway. To try to get them to, the chambers sponsor a light, your pole uptown, or even downtown, if they choose to do it. And every business, the street lamp in front of their business, they adopt that lamp, oh, right there, and they decorate themselves, and the city would put up some Metro Bucks gift cards and stuff like that for the number one, number two, number three position. To actually decorate the uptown and downtown, if they choose to do it. So, that last conversation I had with Lisa, she was working on that, and hopefully, we could, the Superman, I mean, the Christmas parade is, I mean, it's right around the corner, so it'd be nice if it, and I'll, I'll try to get ahold of her, maybe Wednesday, and see where that's at. I think that'd be a good idea on their part, wouldn't cost us very much, and would decorate the uptown lamps, so that's kind of where that's at.
Speaking of the Christmas tree, I assume that Washington Park would be the ideal spot.
They wanted it.
For big Christmas.
Now, I understand that there's discussion now, is that they would like it down in front of the Superman sign.
In front of the Superman sign, a big dump.
Yeah, so as people came into town, they would be welcomed by this Christmas tree.
As long as we don't block the view of the trucks coming out, causing accidents out there.
Well, like I said, that, you know, all this has to be discussed to make sure that we're.
Yeah, I guess it's a good idea.
So, I mean, you know, I thought, it's a, it's a solid good idea, it's just whether we can pull that off or not, I guess, like, would be part of the problem. So, we'll, we'll hand that to Park and Rec and let them deal with it.
It's getting kind of, kind of short notice to buy the tree.
I think every who, every who had that idea needs to bring that to Mr. Carol.
Yeah.
Or myself, and see what we can move on it, and then you've got to go out and cut a tree big enough to put in there.
Yeah.
That's not the easiest thing to find in the world.
I just.
They could cut out a big oak tree someplace, yeah. Stoney can get one when he's out there hunting.
I know a lot of people who donate a tree in their yard.
Go tree hunt.
I wouldn't have bet it.
Yeah, I got one thing on, on new business, electric out there, again, cost a mission. Lost it fifth, sixth, and the seventh, seventh, I really lost it. It went down, I lost.
They actually threw the breaker out there Friday at four oh, whatever.
Four eleven.
That's it.
Okay.
We know what happened there.
Yeah, okay, on the, on the fifth and sixth, they, the lights dimmed way down again, and I lost the computers and TV. And it does it when the dialysis center comes on, that generator. So, there's something.
Why would the generator not on?
I don't know, that's. As soon as it comes.
That might be losing power, then the generator.
We lose the power, and then the generator comes on.
At the dial? Oh, you mean the whole city?
Oh, yeah.
I was just saying, it might be a.
We can actually tell off the system, if it kicks on, it actually registers that it's off, that it hasn't been off except Friday.
Were there loud noises, friend, the breaker?
Oh, yeah.
I heard you, you had two phone calls, okay.
Big time.
Alright.
Hospital actually called me in.
I didn't hear it, but two of my neighbors did.
Yeah. They said it was a little loud and unusual.
Well, I heard the explosion, what you said.
Well, I'm telling you, they do make a lot of noise.
It's cycling to City Power, that's, that's just their test.
When they're, it's got to be doing something, because it's coming back through across the street somewhere.
Well, if yours dimmed.
When the generator goes.
If yours dimmed, that would be a low voltage, yeah, that'd be a dropping voltage if yours dimmed. So if his kicked on, it shouldn't, I, is there anything showing a dropping voltage out there? Hey, when's the last time we tested voltage in around the hospital? I know we've, we've done it before.
I monitor the circuits.
On the skater?
The skater.
Oh, okay, that's right, because all the new stuff's got skated to it.
Yeah, if there was a spike or a drop in voltage, you ever pick it up?
Are your neighbors having anything, or is it just you, Jerry?
I, I don't know, I haven't talked to them, but it happened on the fifth and sixth and seventh, or it's on the seventh.
What time on the fifth and sixth?
On, it was, on the fifth, it was seven fifty-six AM. And on the sixth, it was eight oh five.
AM?
Have you checked your system? Have you checked yours? I, I tell you from experience, in my office, if the lights are off for thirty seconds, we get fifteen telephone calls. I mean, the other day, when that, Friday afternoon, that was at four oh, it was four eleven, four eleven. See, the girls go home at four o'clock on Fridays, and the telephone, all three lines is up, police department gets, they just get wore out, you know, with telephone calls and stuff like that. And I don't think I got but three or four, maybe five on Friday, but all they had to do is go out there and reset that breaker, so it didn't take just a time standby, got, you know, was done. So, we'll just have to keep a monitor on it, Stoney can check the skater system, and, you know, a little hiccup, it will show.
We, I can find out from hospital when they're cycled, what they're cycling, so we compare that to your times, but it shouldn't do it, all, when they cycle, that's just the engine kicking on, the testing engine, it doesn't actually kick the light again.
There is no influx from City Power going to that, when it's going to get tested. So it shouldn't be drawing any, any hammering off, off the city circuit.
Okay, let me find out when it's tested out there, and then we'll, we'll have an idea to look at that, but should.
Will the hospital know when they?
When it tests, Ronnie will know.
From the dialysis?
Yeah, we own the building.
Oh, that's right.
They just lease it.
Yeah, well, we have no lease power here, it just.
I would think so, we'll talk to Ronnie and see, and he should probably find out when that, when there's, when this, the hospital's got one too, if I don't win it cycles. He'll know what time.
It did what it's supposed to do, it's supposed to break. Alright, anything else under new business or miscellaneous?
Well, it's just, a thank you from some constituents who called about some of the flags on Tenth Street that were ripped, appreciate you guys.
Appreciate you guys changing them out and putting new flags up, that looks much better, thank you.
And we're probably, when we take them down Wednesday, or if it rains tomorrow, we won't take them down till Thursday or Friday, and what we're gonna continually try to do is about every event that we have to put the flags up, to remind us that we'll order twenty-five to thirty at a time, and just gradually try to replace.
Person.
And get back, in a year, we can probably have it done.
I, I know this yesterday too, Mayor, that uptown, there was, it seemed like every business had a store full of people.
Well, they had that, that summer, I mean, that Christmas thing.
Yeah, but I was trying to mean, and every, one of, or a lot of people in town.
I had Floyd Zullins place out there, there wasn't a place to park out there, I went by there, and I mean, it was flat full, it was parked all around blocks.
It's white, it's up here, you know, there wasn't a parking place, and the stores were full.
Down Fifth Street, every one of the little shops and stuff like that, had a good crowd moving in and out, so.
Well, Mayor, I noticed one night last week, between Sixth and Seventh Street, the lights on the south, on the west side of Market Street were out.
That's been fixed.
It's been fixed.
Good, thank you.
Those things are on breakers, if one of them kicks out, sometimes four or five of them kick out.
I think they hit it when they were doing that paving there.
Okay.
Stoney, have you, have you checked Ferry Street, we, Second and Third on the east side? Have you, have you had a complaint on them? Not for last, it's all out on the east side.
I will check that.
Okay. Yeah, all, all of them, corner to corner.
Miscellaneous reports, anything for any. Financial reports, payment of salaries, payroll, and contract bills. We have a motion, we have a second, call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Presine?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Payment of miscellaneous bills, I make a motion as well. Call a roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Presine?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus? Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
We do have a need for a very brief.
Is that short?
We're going through this whole thing here.
That's brief, and. That's brief, oh.
That, that, I made him sick last week.
Did it really?
Yeah, he's taking pills, getting it up. I just read just a little bit, two pages there, and made me sick. Uh, but just, he's not gonna go through that whole thing. The reason I know he's not going to, there's a show on tonight, the him and Jim can't wait to get home and watch, so.
I'll make a motion.
They're not going together, really.
Which, which item are we going in for?
Personnel.
I'll make a motion, because we're in the closed session, concerning that brief, second half.
I'll say any motion.
Ted, you sure, it's not something you own?
There's nothing on TV?
Oh, don't come on till eight o'clock. Nine, okay, sorry.
Well, next time you come, that back row back there is a pretty tough place to sit, I think.
It's entertaining.
It fits in well, I think.
It's entertaining.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Presine?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell.
You had a commissioner to me.